This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Girdon School District Board of Directors will now call meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you satisfy that we have a quorum present? Alright, with a quorum present, we will be able to conduct business. Uh Robbie, can you lead us in a word prayer?
Certainly Father Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come and to serve. Would we ask you to help us to make decisions with wisdom on these things as in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Well, standing over our top pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any special recognitions since we were doing report to the public. Come up with anything.
Uh next item is public comment, we don't. So we'll pass by, we don't have anything for executive session, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
From the meeting.
For the motion. So I've got, alright, we've got a motion and a second, all favor that motion say aye. All in dissent, same sign, that motion pass. The next item is our financial report. Anybody have any questions about it yet? Ron, does there anything? Can expound on?
I think um tax money is beginning to come in from that July and so on and so on. Uh we are done in this month, next month, we should be seeing really large checks and uh. You know, you know, as I keep up to action. Hold on that money for a hand, so you should be seeing us see um because in November, we should pay a large check from that. Um and we have got our online full payment, we don't have really a whole lot set up with it yet, but we've not got it set up and yeah. We're like, we've put some lunch for the adults, they can pay their, they can pay their lunch online, so we do have that. Wouldn't help to get that um going a little more for activities.
Yeah, I'm going to link it to our fundraisers and all of those, like when athletics sell their sweatshirts, things like that. No, theirs is a separate one, theirs doesn't go through the school.
I was just thinking somebody said much.
Yeah.
After the, what was the firearms last month, we got into the building fund, is that building fund still on step where we were, which was? But then probably not. Did that fluctuate any from the numbers we had?
Might fluctuate because we've put money in, we've taken money out, so we should be still about what we were, but I'll work into that and.
Any more questions? You want to move on the financial?
What did we refer to financial report?
Well, we have a motion and a second, all favor that motion say aye. All in dissent, same sign, that motion pass. Next item is our, under our business legal finance consent agenda.
No, that's, that's. You have the action item on it, you concluded your interview, so now is your time to make your decision.
Does any have any more questions about that process or what we? What we need to vote on, are y'all ready?
And I will, I will say this, Ron did, we talked about it today, so I double checked with it and reached out to ask um for rate and standard rates five percent. For, that's what their standard rate would be.
On the end.
Mm-hmm.
And is my experience from that is the only thing you'd watch is stuff that's fancy. Because that adds to that five percent, five percent of a big number is a big number. And so they're always interested in doing that.
After we, after we, I guess, approve one of these tonight, what's the next step as far as? I know it was stated that we're gonna have a lot of meetings with these guys.
We reach out to them so they can start making the connections with like, with French and get the ball rolling as far as that goes.
Yes, will the, will the final plan have to be approved?
Yes.
Yeah, this kind of just preliminary.
This is just getting all of those pieces in place before our next steps.
Don't want to move on voting.
This little discussion, I guess, um yeah, I'm, I'm not normally um trying to go with a bigger person. Um but I really appreciated Napples' um commitment to, or what it appears to be their commitment to bringing in our students. Um and just on all, on their Facebook pages, all three of them tried to, they have one. Um and just to try to see what if they do have an interest and I don't know if you all did that, but like the super or the, one of the side construction managers that was here the other night, he was actually at that same school that they talked about, um doing like career math with those kids, like construction at a group of kids that they were actually doing that on, so I don't know, that's just something that I feel like we're trying to bring into our school or that we are have brought into our school is construction management and just we're trying to for a company that is that size, they have the resources to utilize that, so I mean not saying that the other places don't, but I mean, obviously they have specific people and a whole program for that, so just.
I agree, I mean, that was, that was impressive and this is just me saying something, the only thing that concern about any big company is that you lose the personal touch that a, that a smaller company sometimes can grasp, uh and that's just been my experience and that's only only thing that.
One thing I don't remember about that interview, that project manager, how many projects did he say they were over time, did he say?
I don't, I don't remember their exact titles, for the one that would be here, that the gentleman that was on the far left.
There he fell up.
Yeah, he said he'd be here all.
It was him, he'd be here the whole time, that was his only project, the guy that would be above him has the real, yeah.
Yeah, for your, for your, yeah.
Um and he would be here like, wow, so we get challenged with, yeah, so I mean, I do feel like you're, you're right, like you can get awesome bundle or the mix of large projects, but I mean, it sounded like they were very with even a small project at another school that was.
I mean, they seem very interested, you know, which is, you know.
I can tell you they've all three reached back out just to see if we had had a decision yet, I told them no, it would be tonight, so they've, they've all kept in contact.
I honestly think any.
I mean, I really, that's, that's kind of what I was gonna say, I, I, I would be comfortable with any of them.
I left here that night with the, like, Helen Cox on my agenda and I still like the fact that those names are on site every day, I, I like that aspect of them, but the integrating the kids and the programs and the math, the teaching of that, I, I think that's a huge opportunity for the kids in the school also.
I just, I had just raised another thing from the Nemo school and from their Facebook thing, so I don't remember where it was, but uh like these kids sometimes don't value like, like I'm never gonna use math, I mean, I've said that before and I unfortunately use math a whole lot. Um and so, but for kids that are definitely wanting to more of a construction career minded area and you know, our goal is to make them think all these tests aren't important, like why are, why is this teacher teaching me this?
I've always thought an applied math is if you can show the students what you will use this for in a real world setting, that that would maybe spark some interest in learning that math, you know? When I went to college, I had to take trigonometry and I'm not suggesting taking trigonometry for nothing, but but the reason we did is to learn tree heights from a un- unknown position away from the tree. That makes sense to me, I, I, that would show me the interest in learning how to do that. Now to fully understand the triangle, to come up with that, I don't know, that was above my head, but but I'm. Yeah, if you can, if you could figure out an application, I, I think it would help spark children in learning.
I feel like on the Napples thing, they're, um once the end of their project, so they wrap it up and our maintenance would be handed, and then that thing hosted on their server um of all of our warranties services, so if there's a recall on a product, we don't have to I mean, school is probably more organized than myself, but I would have to go, you know, dig through some, find them back to find a warranty for a, you know, data purchase. So if there was some sort of recall on a system or there was an issue, that, that would all be hosted on their server for their cost.
I thought they all gave yes, uh nice presentations, the, the material they gave, or Snap Holt's gave a presentation on the screen. I, I know there was conversation or at least some statements made by some of the other companies about how big Napples was, although they didn't name them by name. I, I tell you, it doesn't bother me how big or how small necessarily they are. Um to me, Napples, I, I agree with the involved students, I thought that was interesting because the rest of the night, when we asked the, the next two construction groups, that question came up to them and it was based off of what Napples had said. Um Jody Phillips had been part of a hundred and five safe rooms. Um so there's a lot of experience there. One of the other companies, um I think it was a superintendent that would be on the job said um he had been a part of a few safe rooms, which didn't give you a whole lot of confidence with that particular group. If I was ranking them personally, I would go Napples, Phil Cox, and then Kinko. They, they all provide great pictures of the different places that they constructed. Same, but that's just the way I would rank them if I was ranking them one, two, three.
Um Melanie, what, what do you think? We, we do, we, you agree? Josh, what do you have?
I didn't, I didn't see the presentation already.
And what do you think, where?
Like I said, I, I walked in still today on the fence of the two and I, I think both of them are, I think all three of them are great options, but um I do think we, we get a little bit extra in Napples that Hill and Cox could possibly in the future offer, but they're not right now, I think that benefits our students.
I think too, to, something I should have said a second ago and didn't, the details that, that Napples came in with, they, they sent somebody out here on Friday before they ever met with us, and then they turned around and he came back out on Monday prior to our meeting. Um you know, a, a company that's got a lot of attention to detail just before they're actually even interviewed hopefully has that same attention to detail in the whole construction process.
Well, I'm gonna say this, all three of them came out here before they were interviewed. They were, they were all, they were all out and on site before they.
That's, that's good to know, because that, that puts a comparison out there.
He, they kept talking about the safety of our students being the one like, the, like the, the level mesh fence, so like their workers can't see us. Neither said anything like, whatever to be honest, I mean, that's one of their workers to a student, if that's, that we would be nominated, we would be there, so.
I can't remember which, which company was it that was um talking about, you know, where's Napples had shown that they would be parking over and about, well, that's what I was saying, but one company was showing parking.
In, in, I think, which coming like. If, if y'all don't care more, Mr., Mr. Barry, you've had experience with all these contractors, is there anything we're missing, any questions that we need to, you think we might need to ask before we make this decision?
No, I think all three of them are, are very reputable, I've throughout the years have worked with all three of them. Uh one thing uh about, you know, the, the bigger firms is they have a lot of math to feed versus the, the ones that aren't.
Do, does that hurt us in our percentage wise uh in, in any way, or do you think it'd be comparable?
All, all three of them, when, when they're through with the job, y'all um come out saying, I had a good experience with all three, all of them.
Okay, well, thank you, not to me to put you on the spot, but I thought you might could bring something to, you know, to what we're talking about. Thank you.
Is there any concern with going with that bigger, going with the bigger company on, um I guess you say budgeting or over budgeting?
I mean, I think that could happen with any of the three, the only, only concern that I would have, and I'm, I'm dealing with it in a private deal right now, is that when you, you talk to the man that owns the company and you talk to him face to face anytime you want, that is a relationship that's hard to beat.
What group is that?
Uh like uh Hill and Cox and, and then maybe somewhat the Kinko. Nav Holt's, you're gonna have a point person and don't get me wrong, the question that I would ask them is does the buck stop with you? Does from the top down, do they support what you say? And if your words that good, then I'm, I'm fine with that, because he'll be as good as that person that owns that company. Uh but sometimes you don't have that. And I, I'm, like I said, I'm dealing with that with a big company right now that can't seem to find the person to talk to where the buck stops with them. And so uh that would be my concern of dealing with a bigger outfit.
Yeah, I thought that the, the potential interaction with Stephen, okay, I said, bringing up is intriguing. I, I don't know that I would have that if, I don't think I would let that be my, my number one criteria picking a company to do this job, however. It, it is could potentially be, you know, educational, but I, I, I don't, and that would be at the top of my list for criteria.
True.
As far as time to complete like the job, we're all three pretty much the same.
Yeah, I think they all agreed on the timeframe and, and how long it was gonna take and, and the uh pressure, if you will, I don't, of that we would want it done when, when we set up for that deadline.
And recognizing that conditions could deteriorate and things could have to.
Nobody can control weather, just, I mean, you know what, Josh, you know, uh.
I, I will say, I think Robbie, you did, they asked about gentleman over here said something about amounts to be, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, that, that does have to run through your mind when it comes to costs. I don't have an answer to that, obviously the smaller company you would think might, but then the resources that a larger company has uh should be greater as well, you know, and so they may be, be uh maybe a little bit more competitive pricing wise. Eventually.
Well, that's what I got a wonder too, on the two bigger companies, you know, they have where they bid out a lot of their jobs and then they also have that open process with themselves, but then if they're, you know, I asked, started with um Napples on that question, if we start getting behind because your subcontractors can't do it, they're like, we're gonna bring in the workforce, we have, we could do pretty much all these jobs. Just sometimes it's cheaper or to find you a place where it's paid than the one with the local business. Um so that's one thing with the two larger companies that I felt like um that they had a little bit of different, like they have cabinet people, they have welders, they have concrete people themselves, um and if we start running behind.
If they start running behind, they could.
Send some people in there to help them stay on, stay on schedule.
There's subcontract, contract has all that in there that we're gonna take over, if you're not making our death funds, then we're gonna take over. So the two larger companies to me, probably have just more resources. People can, someone's taking, go, had their own in-house, oh, yeah.
But, but they all planned on using subs, is what it seemed like to me, they have to offer, offer you them, yeah.
And I think a lot of that was trying to use more local vendors um here, which is mine. I just don't want us to get behind like in some situations we've been in previously, or maybe it was some of our work.
Yes. I mean, if you could satisfy our ultimate goal and use local people, that's great, but I wouldn't want to let that put us behind.
Yeah, I really feel like all three of them, they probably would.
Ms. Whip, have you had any experience working with any of them?
Um, a little bit. But I, I still feel like any of the three are going to.
Satisfy what we need.
Yes, I guess, I've, I've worked in a construction zone with Nav Holt's for four years, so yes, I'm, I'm familiar with them.
Well, I mean, the question is like what I was talking about, did you feel like you had access to who you needed to have access?
Well, I mean, there were hard hats walking around our building for two years after they finished the, the high school at Benton, so I mean, there were always people there, so.
Uh I guess what I'm, maybe what I mean is.
I was not in a position to have to worry about the guy had a specific colored hard hat.
Yeah, no, I got.
I was just uh making sure my classroom was clear so I could get in, that's it.
Uh well, I guess in the talk that you were privy to, were there stuff that just dead ended that you couldn't never seem to find a solution to?
I don't think that was the case, no, I, I think, I think that they were always going to be working to fix anything that came up.
That's true.
I'm gonna kind of back up and pull them, I said Robbie, can I grab my heart while I go and I'm gonna go, I'm gonna stick with my gut. You know, on, on another, I'm back at seeing back forth, but I've been talking about these guys a lot and I I talked to Lakeside and I believe Lake Hamilton at our last training in Archidevly we went to. And they had nothing, but I mean, like he said, you're gonna get nothing but good things and you're done.
Yeah.
Very few people probably leave with bad taste in their mouth from school, school building. But I, I just, we're, we're from a small town, you know, we, we, most of us come from small families. And I, I just, I think the way Hill and Cox come in and presented herself to me as equivalent as that big, big business with them being local up there, their, their office is right there, we know where it's at, they're gonna be on scene. I think I'm gonna say true to my. And I, I think I, I'd like to support them on this. And I, I, with them being local and those guys putting the time on, on ground, I think we could even possibly talk them into something like Nav Holt offers and maybe get our kids in there to, and we may kickstart something for them, they didn't know they had with this issue. I, I feel like those guys are some pretty personable owners.
Well, how would y'all want to structure this vote? Do y'all want to just pick, pick one and put it out there and us vote or?
I mean, we make a motion and then.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we uh select Napples for our construction manager.
Okay, we have a motion.
Those are hard decisions.
What is your extra than you get, it's not good.
Yeah.
I'll say it on the motion.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same sign. Okay, we have, let's see what we got. Let's, let's back and raise our hands on this vote, see where we're at. Okay, all in favor of that motion, raise your hand. All in dissent, same sign. We have four, two, so. Okay.
Next is the civil engineer contract.
Yeah, the civil engineer contract.
And they couldn't be here tonight, but French might be able to uh give us a little insight on that since that's who you sent, um we've got the contract for the civil engineer to come down, so is there any information that you'd like to share on them, working with them, it's crafting a toll, it's uh Daniel George, I think.
They, they were being up engineering who have been around since the Ice Ages and uh they did very good work. And uh they're, they're looking at two spots where we could possibly put the buildings and.
Uh it, it shows that, that they proposed thirty-one thousand dollars for their services.
Yes.
Is that customary?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So you're doing that one bid for this one going down?
Well, that's, was sent to us on that one and, you know, trying to find one is yeah, and that was included in our numbers when we started looking at those initial numbers for budget, that was included in that as well.
We're being more, I know, uh Kendall wasn't here the other night too, but like having a different look of on the, from being on the side of the building to.
Well, that's what they're gonna come in and look at, that, yes, they're gonna come in and see which one is more viable for what we need.
When you talk about moving like potentially like pre-K, it's not what maybe maybe on it, um like moving the building more in the like center behind of, or is that?
That, again, we go back to this plan, that original plan had a contingency for future pre-K and the way they had it positioned was down closer to the highway, like more towards behind but to the front of that building is what was originally, is that on there?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about this.
Yeah, the, the original spot that they talked about in that plan for the pre-K was down around here and they talked about putting in like a circle drive around the pre-K, but again, that's one of those further down the road situations, but it was planned to be over, so if they put it on this end of the building, if they put the the new classrooms on this end of the building, pre-K would have been right around in here. But again, that all goes back to what's, mm-hmm.
And, and I'm assuming the civil engineer is going to maybe shoot down anything that if we or you come up with, if there's a problem.
If there's a major problem, they're going to say this is going to be a major problem, yeah, true.
We were out there the other day and, and a lot of electrical and the power comes through this way and this thing, so we're looking at this side and this side of the building.
That's true.
That's what the civil engineer is going to come out and look at, so we just need to get our contract in place for that so he can get moving.
Is there any more questions or are y'all comfortable to move on it, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
We have the civil engineer contract, we're proud of them all associates, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of that motion say aye, all in dissent, same sign, that motion pass.
The next thing on here is of course French architects and Robbie, I asked them to come down because I knew you could ask if we were going to get to talk to the architect, so I thought tonight would be as good a night as any if, if you had some things you wanted to ask.
I have a question, it seemed like on this map, you've already uh without, without knowing what the seven ears are gonna, gonna say, are you suggesting on your knowledge that you think this is the better location?
Yes.
Okay, why, why, why did you say?
Just the elevation changes, going to put some ramps in and things like that, and so we felt like it was it worked better, and that might not, we might go out there and this, and civil engineer might say, over here is better, so.
Yes, definitely.
But we will keep you abreast on.
Oh, no, I got you.
So you're to end your questions about this drawing here?
Yeah.
Uh my first question would be, in, in the safe room area, there's a ten foot hallway there. But in the rest of the building, I, I don't know, it looks like maybe it's an eight foot hallway except for the where it widens out. Is there a reason for there being a ten foot hallway versus something smaller?
Well, this right here really is, it's a schematic drawings. And so what happens is we take the light ring for classrooms and we can then fill it and then we, actually what we did is make a triangle out of this and did a lot of way, that one happened to be a little bit bigger, so this will be fine tuned.
I mean, I'm just looking at it wondering about classroom size, you know, you got hallway there, but why, why would you not make the classroom larger than you can, I didn't know if there was some type of requirement with the safe room.
It, yeah, well, it's more of the size of a kindergarten uh size, there's a thousand square feet in these, you know, the the safe room, the safe room is just one of the class, uh two of the classrooms that we have and made them a safe room.
One of the, me and Robbie, we got into this last week or last month. That hallway, would it be considered a safe room also, would it have to continue on top, so it'd seem any top?
We can, but uh because everything around it will be safe and, and the ceiling will be, a safe ceiling will be concrete cap. Uh but you'll have to do uh防盗 doors.
防盗 doors, yeah, that's, that was our concern, if it was, when they, how, how are their door, those doors gonna be positioned?
Yeah.
I see the guy, square footage to your site.
Exactly, yeah, that would, not if you're gonna have both sides of it safe, why not add another two, three hundred square feet of safe room?
Yeah.
So you're saying the way that you have it drawn there, that hallway is not considered part of the safe room, apparently?
No, it, it, it is considered, this above, above the, the red line.
Yeah.
Right here is considered the safe room.
Yeah. I just wasn't understanding if that was your intention.
How, how could it be considered safe room if it doesn't have the cap like Barry was suggesting?
It will have.
It will have, okay, so we're all ready.
The only thing we'd have to change would be the doorway.
Right, and, and what happens is when we do a, a, a smaller ceiling, smaller ceiling being fourteen feet, you can build out a, a block, fill it and put rebar in it and then tie that rebar, rebar back into the cap. You can build out a, a block, fill it and put rebar in it and then tie that rebar, you rebar back into the cap over the hallway.
Yes, sir.
So then that becomes the safe run. And if it gets higher, the ceiling gets higher, you gotta use precast panels, which we're doing one right now with precast.
And it's more expensive.
It's more expensive.
So I, I'm just, um. From my, uh, layperson point of view, back to this hallway issue, which I know you say it can be adjusted, but. Are any teachers in the room or, or administrators in the room, classroom in the past? Would you, would you want wider hallways or bigger classrooms? What, what, I mean, you, you, what do you think? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking, but the thing is with kindergarten rooms, they have a specific required square footage. For the kindergarten classrooms, that's why they are the size that they are.
But they can be bigger.
Well, they could be bigger.
That's, yeah, I wouldn't suggest make it smaller, that, that's not.
I think he's saying take into that hallway, unless like the hallway was there to be the size so like you could funnel a bunch of kids in, which I do think that.
Yeah, and, and like I said, you know, the, uh, their, their program requirements, the classrooms, eight hundred and fifty square feet. Kindergarten is a thousand square feet, so we placed those within this rectangle and we have a little fat on the edges that we're gonna. Take into the classroom.
And I can tell you, there is a specific value in having a wider hallway because I existed in a very narrow hallway with. Four hundred kids coming through it at a time, pressed up against the wall, trying to stay out of their way. Versus a hallway that was wider and could facilitate more flow a- and didn't quite feel so claustrophobic.
Yeah.
If, if you're saying like the, the. Concrete blocks and then we're filled back on with rebar and then we're back on with concrete, that is the exterior only, correct? And then, but like this interior wall of this classroom is not that, or is it?
Well, i- i- if there's femur doors to it, you gotta make it all thing, but it should pretty much be just the.
So, so this exterior main is, so this has to be a FEMA door then?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the hallway would be, but does that door have to be a FEMA door then too?
It, it would have to be, but you could leave it open and, and have it where it opens and shuts, you know, with a.
So, so if. A barn and then also would be another place that you could put kids.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does it, does this, uh, layout look pretty close to what other schools have done that you've seen?
It is, uh, um, you know, the, they kinda had that new requirement on safe room, you know, and, uh, we have done. At Center Points Elementary, we did a, a concrete block, uh, with reinforcement. And then came up and tied into a cap that just went over the, um, hallway. And the structural engineer said that is safer, but it's not a safe room. And it's because FEMA requires you to withstand two hundred and sixty mile an hour winds. That, that I just told you was more like one sixty, uh, mile an hour winds. So.
I'm gonna keep going back to these hallway, we feel like, feel like I've been hearing what I'm trying to say. I wouldn't wanna spend this kind of money, I wouldn't wanna spend this much money, have somebody walk into this building. And say, why is this hallway so big and why are these classrooms so small? So I would not suggest at all that the classrooms would be smaller. But I'm just wondering if you had an eight foot hallway, you added a foot to each classroom, that not be a reasonable thing? It's not my decision to make, I don't think, but I certainly think there should be a lot of input if you have kindergarteners. In the, in those rooms from, whether it's administrators or, or kindergarten teachers, you know, what, what, what's necessary? Do you need a ten foot hallway for five year olds or do you, or a ten foot hallway for five year olds or do you eight foot hallway? That's just my thought process.
We do have an administrator who's been a kindergarten teacher.
I know, we've got a lot of administrators in here, nobody speaking of.
Well, you can ask, Tanya's got her hand up back here, so.
I think it really depends on if we're, I mean, if we're using those for safe rooms, that's the goal. If we're trying to funnel three hundred kids into those rooms, the hallways might need to be wider. Will they need to be wider all the time? I mean, you know, but if we're trying to be in a hurry to get these kids into those classrooms, the wider hallway. Might be better.
Has, has a thousand foot been acceptable for the largest classroom that we're allowed?
What if we, didn't we measure the classrooms right now are like seven hundred and ninety square feet?
Hasn't state given any sort of.
And, and the cap on your kindergarten class size is not going to change. You can only have twenty-two kids and that's if you have a full-time teacher and a para in there.
Cause, cause what I think.
Because otherwise it's eighteen, eighteen to twenty, so you're not going to be able to put more kids in there during a class period.
Uh, I mean, I think what Ms. Kinzer said is very important, is we need to have a workable safe room scenario. Along with our ability to have classroom, and so that's where the bottleneck. You, you want that bottleneck to not be there when you're moving kids into this safe room area.
Right.
So that might be.
Another thing with the wider hallway, um, because we are going to be very limited on space. Is we will use the hallways for interventions where we have tables in the hallways in. And with kids and intervention is where, that's where a lot of our interventions are probably gonna end up taking place if there's space in the hallway, so.
How big is that entrance door planned on being that goes into that hallway? Do you want to have the door? How, how big is that doorway? It's, it's a six foot or double door. Are the doorways that go into the kindergarten rooms, are they three foot?
They have to be.
The only reason I'm asking is because if you're talking about funneling kids, you, you got a ten foot hallway, but you're funneling. Through a six foot door into a ten foot hallway and then to the three foot door, so. You're not, you're not going ten foot all the way into the room, so that's just one thing. That's the only reason I'm asking about.
This, this will change based on most signs and us making things fit.
It does look like these other classrooms, like classroom one and two, uh, I guess they're leasing out here and they do have. Maybe like this is like the extra storage that you can access, or maybe you're just building stuff in to try to make up space.
But that is storage and stuff.
Yeah, and you're going to have like, like Victor can tell you, we've had this discussion to a closet for the server for that building, you're going to have to. Have that space for it, yeah.
And then down onto a thousand square foot, it's a, they have restrooms.
They have that, the restrooms, but there's really not, yeah, some, some extra storage.
So that's one, is that, that, that's one restroom for those four classrooms? Is that true?
I think.
Well, they.
You have group restrooms on each side.
Oh, oh, I got you.
And then we've got staff, like a private.
Uh, one thing we talked about was windows, with, with, with your thoughts on windows in a safe room.
Windows, the cheapest thing to do, I mean, there, there's an array of things you can do, but the cheapest is to buy FEMA, uh, windows. Falls on the guidelines.
Does that, the, it's a more expensive point of. That's such a, that's similar.
Uh, I don't know, have a price for it.
Is most of the school, we even debated to not even have windows, but there's a pros and cons to that. Is most of the schools opted for window scenario?
Facilities ask you to, when you're doing these drawings, is to bring in natural sunlight. And so we have to, we have to kind of bring in sunlight into the space. But that window would be, uh, you know, that withstands.
But still from a mental standpoint, probably natural sunlight is probably pretty important.
It is, I wanna know where facilities was when they were building room two O two at Benton High School. Cause it's very nice to have natural light.
But this, this will progress and look, you know, different when we show it to you in China.
When do you anticipate, um, like a next set of drawings or plans?
Uh, we're working on it now, so, um, I could get that back to Ms. and give it schedule.
These teachers.
More questions? Thank you.
Okay.
The last thing we've got is policy updates.
Okay, yeah. Last thing is our approval of a policy update.
There's three policies, one is certified, one is, uh, classified, and then there's, uh, the school choice policy. All three of them were just updates based on legislative changes, the twelve week paid. Leave, that's what's for the certified and classified, we had to include in there because of course, you know, the wording was. That schools had to give at least twelve weeks of leave, but they also said, but you can't give less than that. So the wording, it changed on that, and then the school choice update for the dates and, and all of that, that's pretty much what that is.
I mean, we approved the policies.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
And we don't have anything under the curriculum instruction. And as far as director's report, we gave you the data during the report to the public, so. So next, future business.
All right, we have a motion. We have a motion and a say, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed, we are adjourned.